Hello, my name is Michael Graham and I'm here with Joe McFadden. He's running for council seat in this upcoming election. And I want to welcome all of our viewers to Fro Road 220 election. So, Joe, welcome.
Thank you.
Some parameters before we get started, of course, what I go over with everybody is that this is based on local issues. We don't talk any partisan politics or anything else at this. What we really want to focus on is what's important to the town of Front Royal and some of the issues that are coming up. Each of the candidates, of course, have been given the 20 questions that were put together and previewed and you picked five today you'd like to go over. And hopefully sometime in October, you'll pick another five and come back and talk with us again.
Sounds like a plan.
Yes, sir. So, Joe, I've just gotten to know you here lately. You're a pretty busy guy, aren't you?
I am, yeah, I'm very busy. Six kids, so that's probably my most important job as a father. I'd say having a full-time job at the federal government is a big deal. But, you know, starting a business here was an even bigger deal for me. I'm owner and CEO of Battlegrounds Fitness right on Jackson Street. We took over the old Schules Furniture Building.
Low plug, low plug for business.
That's right, I have to plug my business. Always got to work that angle. Handing out cards left and right, so if you want one, let me know. And, you know, and I've been on the Town Planning Commission now for five years in that capacity, serving now as the vice chairman. And I look at this as kind of an opportunity to move. I've seen a lot of what we've done over the past years and I've helped write the capital investment plan, helped work on that. It was a great opportunity and I'm looking at how can I help some of those initiatives move forward and how can we help that direction go in the future for the town. So, the next logical step for me was running for town council.
Well, that's great. You have a little warm-up with the Planning Commission. So, you have a pretty good insight on what's going on within the community sort of right now, right?
I do, and, you know, having worked with town staff, having worked with the folks, I know some of the players, but I have to be honest, you know, in the capacity as town planner, I've really stayed in my lane. I haven't tried to get involved in any of the local politics up until this point. And we made best decisions based on best practices. Land Education Use Certificate, where they sent us through a program at, through the University of Virginia. And we learned the way planners across the state learn and what we should be doing as a town to kind of move forward in that sense.
Right. Well, it's kind of cool because, you know, part of having that experience of planning and the growth of the community, I guess, one of the issues, I think, is kind of one of the silent issues is water.
Yeah, that's a big issue. You know, I don't want to talk too much about my federal career, it's not really important here, but what it is, some of my experience, so, I actually worked since 2011, I've worked in the Office of Water at the EPA.
Oh, really?
So, you know, there's a really great program that we haven't tapped in. They had $5 billion just last year in funds in 2020. It's called WIFIA. It's a water infrastructure.
Can we get some of that to Front Royal?
We could, and we haven't applied for it. For local, state, tribes, anyone can apply for it if you've got a need to improve your water infrastructure. And with what we're experiencing with the INI issues, that's a $12 million project and it's going to dig deep into our reserves. We should be looking for other ways to fund it. Grants, loans from the federal government and the WIFIA program is, DC is using it. There's a ton of places that are using it. I helped them set up some of their infrastructure on the IT side to accept applications. So, good people, really great people working on that program at the EPA. And I could see us as a town applying for a loan to help upgrade. So, instead of just trying to fix the problems that we're dealing with now, why not upgrade? Why not, you know, get some federal loans that we can, you know, they're always at low interest rates, they're always reasonable. They're trying to fix the water infrastructure in the United States, especially in small towns across the nation. So, why not tap into that?
Yeah. Well, like I said, I mean, recently, I guess that came, really came to the forefront when, I guess, there was a movement to put 125 rental apartments out on the corridor, which is outside the town property, or outside the town limits. So, I mean, what did you think about that?
So, in my understanding, and again, I'm, as I said, I've really gotten more, I've learned a lot in the past several weeks in running and talking to folks. And, you know, we weren't asked to approve or deal with, because again, as you said, it was in the county, that Crooked, I think it was Crooked Run South apartment.
Crooked Run Two, I think.
Okay, the apartment complex there and there's another one in Guard Hill Road, I guess there, is that?
Well, that came, that came in after.
Is that still, still going?
I have no idea.
I haven't seen any plan, I haven't seen any development for that. The developments I've seen were, for instance, the Front Royal Limited Partnership came through. Their plans, they've been thinking, talking about this.
And that's the 600 acres of land down in Happy Creek.
And they annexed that to the town, right? So, you know, the difference here is that we had years ago, the deal with the North Corridor, Northern Corridor towards Winchester there, that all of that, the water tap, all the things that happened there, we never annexed that property. Now, the Front Royal Limited Partnership is a different thing, where they've annexed that property, they're trying to develop it. We've worked with them, I've worked with them for years, they've come in several time, David's come in several times to work with us. And looking at what that would be, with mixed use with commercial, mixed in with residential, I think that'd be a very good planned, planned development that could benefit the town greatly because of how they would develop it and everything like that. Building rental apartments, you know, outside of the county, there's a lot of considerations as to how is that going to affect our, our water infrastructure? You know, as we're trying to repair water infrastructure, are we equipped to handle more? A measured pace, a measured approach should be a best pace, a best way to go about it. Instead of jumping right in, building high-density residential, can we, can we do that? I mean, is that something we can do and is that beneficial to the town?
How do you find, how do you find out whether you can do it or not?
I think we need to do, I'm sure we've done studies, additional studies, we'd have to see what the, would that be part? Again, I think that the development on the Northern Corridor, if it's tapping into our water systems, I'm not sure that's right for our town at this time. I'll just say that. That's my position on it. Again, if there were things to change and we could, we could, our infrastructure, but again, at this time, I don't think, I don't think we're ready for that. I think we've got a few things to fix here first.
Well, I think one of the previous, well, the mayor was on earlier and he said that Front Royal has about 1,900 residential lots in the town limits. And, and most of the water is, you have to dedicate it to supplying it for the people who live in the town before you can go outside. And I know the 522 corridor, there is a, I guess, a section up there that we are committed from the town to be able to provide for them for the water. Anything else outside of that, I think, puts a restriction on us because we don't really know how much supply that we have.
Yeah, there's new houses being built currently. We approved the finishing of the, I don't know the name of the neighborhood, my father lives over there, in Goodview and right across from Mary Shady Lane, that whole neighborhood there. I mean, there are new houses being built there, so we have inventory. Personally, I like, you know, I'm not, I'm not a tree hugger per se, but I work for the EPA, I believe in reusing things. And, you know, one of the things that I thought about when I moved to this town was I bought a 1903 house that had been, you know, cleaned up. It was a foreclosure. Every house I've, I'm in the process of closing another house now, it's an 1890s house. So, I like to, you know, the.
Do they have electricity to it now?
Yes, electricity. It's got, it's been modernized a lot in the interior, but for.
Running water and stuff?
Running water, that's right. But in, you know, my current house was the one that we moved into, it, I like that the woodwork, the things that are kind of of the past, that's great. And it was a foreclosure when I bought it, you know, it was just sitting there, empty. My old, the first house I ever bought with my, with my wife was a foreclosure. I think that there's enough inventory out there in the town of Front Royal itself. We're still, we are still building new houses within, within the town limits, you know, until that's expanded. And I guess the great information from the, from the mayor, the mayor there, that 1,900, you know, lots, that's a lot of inventory. Do we need to be building something out in the corridor that's not going to necessarily benefit the town? I don't think so. As, you know, as a town representative, fighting for the town infrastructure and our use is the most important thing we can do. We need to make sure that our needs are met first.
Oh, I think it's great. We have to take care of the house before we go outside the house.
Yeah, it's a, I think that in the future, we could look at that, but that's a long ways off, honestly.
Well, one of, one of the things that have been brought up is, is the amount of water that industrial growth will require. And I think the survey that, or the study that they did with the Planning Commission, the North, I think it's Northern Virginia Planning Commission here in town, it's a planning commission for regions, regional, regional plan, wait, wait.
Regional, yeah, the.
Regional Planning Commission.
Yes.
And I think that the report came back, said we had adequate water supply for about a 3% growth through 2025, 2030 for residential, 3% residential growth. But it didn't really, that really didn't address industrial. And, you know, and I think we really need to get a plan for that because if you get a nice, good industrial, commercial company that comes in that requires a lot of water, then we have to make sure we have enough capacity to be able to provide it to them.
I can, I can agree with that absolutely. Industrial tax base keeps our residential tax, you know, taxes at bay. So, that is important if we want to continue to not have tax increases. And there's candidates that come to the table and say, I'm going to never, I'm going to get rid of all taxes, that's just not, not a possibility. We've had that in the past. We, what we have to do is, I do want to keep it, I don't want to raise any taxes. But I also want to understand that we need to find efficiencies in the processes we currently have, find, there's, there's always money someplace, there's always funding, but we're just not looking hard enough.
Well, no, I like the idea of some of these grants and low-cost loans and stuff. I don't think, I don't think Front Royal has ever really gone after a lot of that type of stuff.
I think it's a lot of work and, but it's also something that if we, if we commit to it, you know, I think it's achievable. We had to go after grants for my business, you know, COVID closed us down. We went after the low-interest rate loans, you know, there, we get the letter in the mail that says you owe $40. And I think to my, I showed it to my business partner and we're very happy. We saved 40 bucks, but we don't even owe it for a few more years. So, we were like, let's just start escrowing that, put it in account every month, put 40 bucks in the accounts, and we need to pay back our federal loan for a COVID relief loan. You know, the same thing with the CARES grant, you know, we were very happy we applied for the CARES grant, but we did the work. We put in the paperwork, we filed in those things because it was important to us. And if it's important to the town, we've got to be able to do that, put in that work to file for these grants and these, these things. I know the WIFIA program is, you know, one of these, you know, do we really want the federal government in here with a bunch of money, working on things? We've already had the EPA in here once before with the Superfund site, right? They cleaned up the AVtech site. You know, maybe it's time again for, for us to lean on them a little bit to help us fix some of our infrastructure and, and modernize.
Well, that's one of the reasons federal government's there, right?
Exactly.
To help us out, right?
That's right. Well, occasionally.
Okay. Well, that's interesting because it ties right in about these enterprise funds. Because of course, water and sewer is under the enterprise departments within the town. And then, and what I find interesting is a lot of people don't really understand what the enterprise departments are.
So, we have a similar system at my gym, right? We have, we're entrepreneurs, we started a business, but we have entrepreneurialism, which is folks can come in and run programs underneath of our business. An example of that is the Hit the Weights program. It's a women's only class. We have a coach, Mary, who came in. She runs the program completely, we support her. But she earns based on, it's her business. She's running this out of our facility. So, it's a business within our business. And the enterprise runs similar to that. So, we started a kids program. We thought to ourselves, should we just run it as coaches or should we run it as a four-ninths? We call it a four-ninths model. And we did it that way. And so, it's much more attractive if you can be, and so there's overhead that comes back to the gym to cover expenses.
You have oversight over them though.
We have oversight and we also get, some of the profit comes back to help pay for the things that we need to do to, like, she needed more weights, lower weights, because we're a CrossFit gym, we've got like 70-pound kettlebells. We needed some that were a little bit smaller for the ladies doing, doing the work. So, we reinvested some, immediately some of the profit back into buy different weights that she needed for the class. But then that also covered the AC we installed upstairs so that she, that's going to be constantly kind of be paid off, but it's an overhead cost we had to do to have the facility. So, I think the enterprise systems work very much similar to that. They are businesses within our town government that are collecting revenue from the tax base because they provide services. And when they provide services, there's revenue involved with that. And that revenue comes back into modernized systems, make improvements, replace trashcans and other things that use and reuse, that things they need to do. And that should be, you know, it's creating a reserve fund, right, for those organizations? And I think that's, that's a good way to do it. Different though in my business is there is profit that comes back to the business itself, not yet, we're hoping soon. But there's profit that comes back in to the overhead and can be used in general, in a general way to generally fix the gym, if you think of that as the town.
Kind of fix the infrastructure.
Fix the infrastructure, right. And, you know, I'd hate to see some of these with the, the issues I've experienced with my, I'll just give you personal experience with the electric issue. So, I know I messaged a councilman one time because I had a transformer outside of my house literally sparking and all the power went out of my house, of course, but it was a, it fried some of my electronics. I've lost three refrigerators in six years that I've lived in my house. The latest one, we're about to move and guess what? My refrigerator is dead. So, you know, we're, my kids are, luckily we have a second refrigerator. I have a household of six children, two adults, so we have a second refrigerator. We put everything out in the shed and the kids hate it. They're, my, my, my five-year-old was like crying last night because he had the yogurt, his lunch meat for his sandwich he was making today for, for school. Anyway, what we have is, we have infrastructure needs that need to be repaired, need to be addressed, we need to modernize our meters so that they are automatically reading things. I know they're doing some of that. I think my meter's been replaced in recent years. But there are a lot of infrastructure needs and those enterprise services should be addressing those and focused on that. Other tax base within the town, you know, coming from property taxes, coming from other revenues that then fund things like the police department and our other services, you know, I think they need to stay separate, right? And they should be.
So, you're talking about the general, what goes to the general fund, that's really running by the town.
Versus the enterprise fund, right?
Enterprise fund.
Yeah.
Well, it's interesting because the enterprise funds, you know, the electric, for example, Front Royal is very, very unique in the fact that they have the distribution for electric and they also have the water and sewer and the trash. I've noticed over the last, you know, three, four years that they had some really substantial fund balances. And now those fund balances have been reduced quite a bit for various reasons. And the council has every right to pull funds out of that because they're the, it's like you pulling funds out of this to be able to build the infrastructure. But we got some real challenges on some of the infrastructure that we got to pay for. I think you have a great idea, you talked about INI earlier. But these are like very costly thing. And I think when the mayor was on, he was, he was kind of giving some overview of, of the, the amount of money that's in there. And, and I haven't verified it, so maybe it's something you might want to come back and talk about. But he said, you know, right now, because of the increases in electricity, that they've had to dip in a lot to cover governmental type of, of cost, which, which the town has been funding for over a period of time, which is causing, you know, causing the depletion of the, the electric fund. The water fund, they said, was pretty solid, but we have to have a looping system which went from the cost of four, $3 million to $12 million. We'll have to come out of that fund eventually. And then the third one, of course, is the sewer, which is the INI problem. And he said, we have about 16 million in that budget. And then, once you take out the, the three months that you have to have in reserve, then you got about 10 million left, which means, leaves you, if it costs eight for the, you know, for the INI issue, you only got 2 million in there. And so, I think that, you know, that's a challenge that you coming in as council would have to deal with is you're going to have to do some of these infrastructure things, have to get them done, we can't put them off anymore.
I, I agree that we'll have to deal with them. How exactly to deal with them, you know, coming into this, there's going to be a lot of learning. I'll just tell you, reading, reading, you know.
Still a bit more a publicator, right?
The current mayor has, you know, he's, he's seen all these numbers and talked about all that and understands it all because he's been involved in it for, for a few years. I'm looking forward to getting into that. I, I'm not an accountant, but I have taken accounting classes and I did well in those classes. I've applied that to my business. We track metrics, we track our monthly metrics at the gym. I'm beholden to, I've got a mentor that makes us put it in this data. But I also did something, I hired a really good friend of mine, went to boot camp with him a long time ago. He came in, he's an accountant, and I hired him to do my accounting for the business because I knew that I needed the best person for the job. And in this process, especially in a COVID year and everything else we've experienced, he's been worth every penny. We've done the right things. You know, I like to lean on people with experience and ask them for the right answers. So, you know, I don't, I don't feel like at this time, I'm really equipped to talk too much about all of the budgetary things because I haven't. I did see the budget a few years ago and I've talked about this publicly before, but I, I saw items, it was when we were working on the capital investment plan. And they showed us the budget, the whole budget at the time. And I read through all of it and I took it home and I read through more of it. And then I, I was quite frankly, a little shocked by some of the expenditures that were in there. One of the ones that caught my eye, and I know it's, it's a touchy subject, but I saw that department heads were getting brand-new vehicles to take home. And thinking to myself, wow, we're a very small town, right? So, three, you know, I know we can, I could probably run the town if I wanted to, I mean, like literally run from end to end if I, if I was driven enough. And.
I think it's only 10 miles all the way around.
Right. And so, to do that, why does somebody need to take a car home? You know, that was just a big red flag for me. So, again, as I said, I know there's money there. We'd have to just really, I'd have to spend some time examining that because we can't have no reserves. We can't, we just, we just can't. And my, my first, my first year at the EPA, when I was there, I came in, I didn't have a whole lot of to do, honestly. I was brand-new there, they, they said, okay, we've got to figure out what you're going to be doing and let's get you settled in here. And I asked and I said, I need something to do, what can I do? And they said, well, you can start learning about all the IT systems and how they all work and who's in charge of them. And I said, cool, I'll do that. So, I, I just started investigating. I started digging down, digging down and, and I found, literally found $250,000 worth of money. So, our office, our office is given money, we ask for it from Congress and Congress grants that money, taxpayer money to come to our office. Then we have support agencies. We have support agencies within our, the, the big agency that rely on inter-agency funds, the funds that come from us to pay for services. One of those is basically our IT department. And I was the liaison for that. So, again, I started tracking down all of our IT systems. A lot of what we do at the EPA is a regulatory agency is permits, all about permits. And we have to have ways for states to, and, and local, regional places to report information. So, that requires in the modern era, IT systems. So, imagine there's a lot of IT within, within the EPA. And so, I started seeing where, what was this account and who created it, who owns it? Like, people who didn't live, didn't, weren't alive anymore. I found one that was owned by somebody who'd literally passed away, others that were created by interns, there was a lot of this. And at the end of the day, $250,000 annually, so if you, if you multiply that by, I started there in 2011, by, you know, how much money have I saved the American taxpayer from that to now by, just by doing due diligence and looking at the numbers and doing that? I think I would bring the same investigative.
Energy.
Dig down, figure out what's going on to this role. Because to be honest, when I saw that budget years ago, I went, something not right here. We need to be looking at this a little bit better. And, and as a, somebody who's, you know, feels taxed, I definitely feel taxed when I'm here.
So, Joe, let me ask you a question. So, in other words, you're not going to be business as usual?
No, I'm not going to be business as usual.
Do you think business as usual is acceptable now?
I think we are past that era. I think we've moved past that. I think if you just look at the candidates themselves that are coming to the table for this election year, I think we've moved past that.
Well, it's, it's very encouraging from someone a little older and more mature, the fact to see the next generation coming in. I'm really ready for you guys to take over, I really am. We've, we've kind of messed it up, the baby boomers. So, we're ready for your generation to come in and start adjusting to the new, new norms that we have now. So, I'm really looking for that. But that, that's funny because it ties into business as usual. Well, it wasn't business as usual because you have, the, the town got rid of their tourism department.
Right.
And so, I haven't, I, I've been told now, there's a, there's a group of people that kind of volunteers that manage, but what's your thoughts on the tourism?
I have quite a few thoughts on tourism, you know, I, within our gym, and I'm relating this back to how, how, how this benefit my, my business? Well, if the town succeeds, my business succeeds and I succeed, my family succeeds. So, one of the things we brought into our gym was a climbing wall, 44-foot, 12-foot-high bouldering wall, which is one of the three types of climbing that's coming to the Olympics and, it was supposed to come to the Olympics in 2020, Tokyo. But we really, we want to have, we want to be a hub for climbing. We want to bring people out here, that's, that's tourism, right? We want to, so we were already thinking in our business, how can we help the tourism industry in Front Royal? Because that's a big part of, you know, what this town is and has been for so long. I, I think it's a very important topic that we, I believe there's already been coalitions put together. I haven't had an opportunity to talk to the folks, but there were studies done. What happened to the studies? What happened to the results of that? We, it seems like once again, like, like some of the things I worked on in the Planning Commission, they got worked on and then they simply died. Or they disappeared, or they didn't benefit those that, there wasn't enough benefit for the folks that had the power to say, I, I don't think this is important. And, you know, that's, I, I don't believe that even if we had a huge problem in the tourism department, which just wasn't doing its job, the department. I, I don't think that firing it and ending it is, is the right solution. I believe that if you're not directing them correctly as an executive or in a leadership position, you cannot be upset when they don't accomplish their goals or because you, what direction was she sent in, Felicia? Which direction was the tourism department? I mean, we worked on the grants program for the, the modernization of the downtown Front Royal. We had a branding thing that came through the Town Planning Commission that we were asked to, to, to comment on. I think we need a new brand for the town, like a slogan, like something, like, I know Canoe Capital Virginia, and I see it every time I drive into town, I see where the Canoe Capital Virginia, I think that's, that's cool. Gateway to Skyline Drive is another one I've heard. But we need something new, like adventure capital of, you know, of Nova or something like that. Like, we should have something and we should be boasting about the natural resources we have here, we should be promoting it. That's going to drive people to come out here. And once they come out here and they see how beautiful it is, maybe they return, they come back. I talked to a gentleman yesterday. He said his father, they're from upstate New York, and his father came down here to help build Skyline Drive. And they worked on, he worked on Skyline Drive and he came back home to upstate New York, Lake Placid, beautiful area, my, my wife's family's from that area.
He must be pretty old.
He's, he is pretty old, so he was a baby, he was a baby. Yeah, so his dad, his dad got, got back up there and said, that's it, I'm moving there. It's so beautiful and awesome and I want to move there. He moved a good port, his family and all his aunts and uncles and stuff are still living in upstate New York. But he moved down here and he's lived here his entire life. And I thought, you know, that's, that's what it is for me, like, for me moving here, what was it that drove me to move here? There were so many reasons. But the natural beauty that I wanted to raise my children in was a big part of that. I wanted to be able to have activities, hiking, things that, outdoor activities, healthy living. I have a farm in my backyard and I live in town, by the way, it used to be a parking lot, but I've turned it into a farm. And, you know, that's, that's the kind of thing I want to put a.
We have space, you have a lot of space.
I don't have a lot of space. I do square foot gardening. I don't have a lot of space. I do square foot gardening. Um, you'd be surprised. You walk in my backyard and you go, wait, there's townhouses right there. And Main Street, you can almost see it. And what? You have a whole garden. You have a whole backyard.
Sounds like you'd be a good recruit for the, uh, the, the Chio, uh, community garden next year.
Well, I'm actually, I have a plan to put a, a garden on top of my building at the Schule's Furniture Building, uh, uh, an urban garden. I wanna have bees up there and everything. So. I have a plan to, to teach, um, sustainable far- farming and gardening to people and how you can do it in a small space. Uh, it's a passion of mine.
Well, that's great, cause we need bees. Bees are, uh.
I know. And in the center of town, I, I tried to have bees a few years ago. I didn't succeed at it, but I'm ready to try again.
Well, it's funny. You gotta keep them away from the bears.
Well, up in top of Schule's Furn- the old Schule's Furniture Building.
Well, you know, it's, it's funny you talk about tourism because. You know, you gotta have some, you know, you're, you're creating this new industry and new entrepreneurial type of businesses that would take advantage of all the amenities of the community. Um, but one of the things that, that it keeps coming up is some of the dilapidated buildings and things. Right along the main areas where we have, what I was told, between four hundred and eight hundred thousand people hit twice a year, get, just getting to the drive. What, what would, what would you, what would you think about that?
So years ago, when I put in my application for the town planning commission, that was an issue. It's still an issue. What have we done? Um, I finally saw the houses on Sixth Street are, uh, I've got for sale signs up there as commercial properties, you know. One of the things I'd like to see is that, I'd like to see us encourage, um. Commercial builders or whatever, help, uh, uh, somehow, facility, instead of trying to buy those properties and then. Develop them either through the EDA with their help or with the, you know, with the town just buying those properties, dilapidated properties. I'd like to see us. Facilitate the, the, someone coming in, you know, a company or something with interest, i- ideas, uh, to bring them in, like, uh. There's a lot of areas that, I mean, I, I went through the whole, how is Arlington gonna change when Amazon, I mean, they, they fought really hard to bring Amazon in. I'm not saying being a. Bring a giant company like Amazon, but bring in developers and encourage them to come in here, explain, you know. We have a real communication problem, I think. I think we have a really, um, uh. You know, we've had some scandal, right? We've had the EDA scandal.
Have you had a couple scandals?
We've had a few, right? We've had a few, but they reached all the way up to DC. You know, um, folks, uh, folks that I work with who live in Maryland and other places. Heard about Front Royal and they didn't hear about it for the right reasons. Um, that's not good. We need to change that, um, that message. We need to get out. And proactively encourage businesses. We need to proactively encourage tourism. We can't passively sit back anymore and say. Oh, it's good enough. We have enough people who drive out here, but they drive right through town. They never stop. Um, we need to figure out a way to, to get them to stop and encourage them. And we've had some really great business development here in Front Royal, like the brewery. Um, and, and others that have, uh, I, I think, um, like pa- pavement coming out. That was a really, a cool idea. Um, they've done some really good things now with other restaurants.
They took, they took an old gas station and converted it.
I think that's awesome. I took an old furniture station, turned it into a gym, you know, like. We, we've gotta modernize. We've gotta come up with new ideas and what we have to do is help these businesses come in. And if we're gonna get rid of the dilapidated building issue. I, I think it really is gonna be, that's how we're gonna do it. I don't think it's going to be through, uh, you know. Let's talk about the afternoon. Like just throw that one out there on the table. Like tackle the big one here. Um, you know, the afternoon has been such a contentious issue, but. Yeah, at some point here, there's gotta be decision made. Is it going to be gone? Are we gonna get rid of it? Or are we gonna redevelop it like we had talked about? I've, I approved plans for a redevelopment on that, that, you know, unfortunately. Was part of the EDA and disappeared in that. I mean, there's so many things that I've been a part of approving workforce housing that I've approved. That disappeared. I mean, there's, there's different things that, um, I would, I, I. Often people ask me, so hey, you worked really hard on that. Where is it now? And I say, it went to council. And that for me is synonymous with it died. Um, so I, I don't wanna see that anymore. I wanna see the great ideas coming out, especially out of the planning commission. Um, uh, ideas that are coming out of folks, not, not out of the planning commission, but are coming through the planning commission.
Right.
Um, from folks who are trying to bring great ideas to this town, you know. See them acted on. We, we have a real problem with inaction, I think. Um, action is very important. Uh, there's a really great book, uh, if you're familiar with it, it's called, uh, Four DX, the Four Disciplines of Execution. Um, it's written by, I'm not sure it's the same person. I think it's the same person who wrote Seven, uh, Habits of Highly Effective People.
So it'll be Kobe, that'll be Kobe.
Yeah, it is. So it is Kobe. And it's, um, it deals primarily with, um, how executives or CEOs. Leadership positions have such a hard time. They have a great time planning and they, they have this vision and they wanna do all this stuff. But when it comes to execution, it's very hard to actually execute those things and make them happen.
Well, the problem they have is, is business as usual. So what happens is you have systems in place that people. Have passive aggressive where they really don't wanna change the way they do business. And you do, you know, you've probably seen this in companies that when you go in, you have to turn them around. That's why they usually fire almost everybody, or at least the executives in there, because they're stuck. They're stuck. And that's why it's so exciting having, uh, young people like yourself now get, when you get involved, cause I don't think you guys are stuck anymore. So I'm. I'm, uh, I'm really excited about that.
We're also like in a network now of folks who've, who've, uh, who are starting businesses and. They're starting families and businesses at the same time. They're entrepreneurs who are, are setting up shop in town. And they wanna succeed, of course, right? They don't wanna, they don't wanna pour, pour, pour their, all their energy into something that fails. So. Uh, you know, I'm an advocate for them. I'm an advocate for myself. I'm an advocate for my business partner. We're, we want to succeed, but we need the town to kind of. Help us succeed in some respects and we need the town to see that as, um, this is the direction we're headed in the future is, it. There, there's opportunity here. Uh, we just need to realize it.
Well, yeah, what you're saying is you're creating a vision.
We are, I, I, you know, I, and I saw that vision, um, when I moved here, honestly, I saw. That kind of was heading this direction and I feel like we're like. We're stuttering. It's that, that, we're almost up the hill and over the crest and then we don't have the energy to do it. We come back down. And to be honest, that's kind of like the good old boy clubs is like, nope, sorry, not gonna get ahead on this. And I, I think that. I think that, you know, there's something to be said for, um, folks who've been here a long time. I'm, I'm not disrespecting them at all and folks who. You know, helped build this town, but at some stage, some point, I think they're doing themselves a disservice by keeping the old systems in place. I think that. I've heard, uh, you know, businesses on Main Street get annoyed when other businesses do similar things. Um, I believe that more boats help, uh, with the water rise. I think when you have, when you have a flourishing economy. Because everybody's working really hard. I love competition. You should not be afraid, like, the, having seven candidates in this race has made me. A much better candidate. I will just say that. Like, I could have been a lazy candidate, um, maybe not, but I, I wouldn't have been as, I wouldn't have been as in tune or, uh, worked as hard as I have already. Uh, if the fact that we didn't have so many candidates vying for this. Same thing goes with my business. I have a CrossFit that's less than a mile away from me. Do I, am I threatened by them? Absolutely not. When people come in and they say, hey, are you the only CrossFit town? I don't say, of course we are. Uh. I tell them, no, there's another one a mile away. They're great coaches, uh, they have awesome ideas. If you, if that's what your, your vibe is, go see them. Um, I'm not trying to, you know. I'm, I want the best for my customer, you know, in a coaching business, you want the best for your customer. If that means it's someone else's service, then absolutely. And that's the way, that's the way I see success is. And, and in this case, if we, if the old solutions aren't working. We need new ideas, we need new solutions. And every, and honestly, I, I think that the old guard should see that as a way. Forward, not only for them, for, for everyone else, but for their town as well. And that should be what they want.
Well, that's great. I mean, look, you, you're singing the song here. I, I, I think that's great, uh, great statements, cause. You know, I took it on the chin a little bit, uh, about twelve years ago, cause I always thought my vision, we could be the Aspen of the East.
Ooh, that's a great idea. I like that. Wait, that's a good slogan right there. Didn't, it didn't stick?
Apparently offended a lot of the people who didn't want any change at all. And, and I said, well, Aspen is a beautiful place.
It is.
It's income, it's quaint and everything else. We're twenty-one, twenty-four, one. I mean, we have everything to be that. We just, they just didn't catch on. Hopefully you'll have more success. But let's talk about it, because you're talking about tourism, how important it is. And right now, your new partner in tourism is the county. So how, how would you work with the county?
So I've already met with, uh, before I even got my signatures to get on the ballot, I already met with two, uh, of the board supervisors to talk ideas. I'm very open to working with folks. I'm very open to, um, uh, uh, being a partner. Right? I know there's a lot of, seems like there's a lot of bad blood between the, the town and the county in a lot of respects and. Um, does, one of the things I learned was, um, we're not unique. When I, when I was going through my, my land education use, um, certificate, I. Program. I, I learned that we're not unique in that there's a lot of small towns with a county surrounding and the small towns can die. And I, I believe that's usually a result of the town digging in its heels and not working with the county. If the county is gonna expand. There's so much land out there. There's people who want horse farms or they want, uh, to build a new house or whatever it is. They're gonna do that out in the county, right? Um, and, and they're gonna keep expanding. We, we as a town need to figure out how to attract, uh, county residents into town. Um, for businesses. We also need to, um, uh, ensure that we have a partnership with the county and the efforts they're doing. I mean. Again, there's, there's that shift, we, we, with the baseball stadium, we, we pass that on over to the county. You know, I think that's a great attraction here in town. Um, but it's also an opportunity for town vendors maybe to, to put, bring a food truck. I mean, there's, there's always ways that you can attract more people and work in partnership. I, I believe we always succeed. We always do better and succeed when we work in conjunction and partnership with others, as opposed to digging in our heels and saying, no, I don't want that. I don't wanna be part of that. Um, and if that, if that's the case and we're going forward with the, the county, uh, I will definitely be, I'll have to. There are people that I haven't, I've been told, you need to talk to this person, you need to talk to this person. I'm like, there's only so many hours in the day. I will get there and I will talk to them and I will. I will be interested in their ideas and what they're doing. Um, but again, yeah, partnership is important and working, working with the county on tourism. Um, they've got a lot to gain too, right? We can't just say, it's just the town. The county and the town, we're, we're, we're in this together. We're, we're, uh, we're a marriage and we need to, we need to work together as good partners.
Well, you know, you, you have a very valid point, because as a town, you have certain advantages of being a town, not a city. Uh, because you have shared resources already. And, uh, if you have a strong vibrant, uh, economy in the town, it's certainly the county is benefiting from this.
Absolutely.
You know, with high density, you can actually get more taxes and more stuff. That's why. Uh, a lot of these centers develop is because it's, it's much more economical and also much more rewarding to have high density in, in a. Uh, concentrated place like a town.
Yeah.
And I never could figure out why there's, in, in the past, why the county was always kind of against the growth of the town. So. With the new leadership in the county now, I think it'd probably be much easier for you guys to.
I, I really do hope, hope so. You know, we saw a changeover, um, in both the EDA board and in the, uh, the county board of supervisor. We had some changeover there and. Um, I'm, I'm looking forward to working with those folks.
Yeah, I think there's some great people in there now. Uh, you know, let's, we're wrapping up here on the last question here. Uh, I guess I was kind of roped into this. I got called into this, uh, and they were asking me about how, uh, my experiences developed. Uh, is, is going for the town manager's job when I came out of private industry. And, and I shared with them that that was probably the most intense, uh, interview process I've ever had, even though I was running very large companies. Uh, what I went through in Front Royal was unbelievable. And so they were asking me about the new, a new town manager they're looking for now. And, and right now, I guess the question I have to ask you is, is that, do you? Do you, what is your opinion or what's your position on, should the current council hire somebody or should they wait until? You take office, uh, for the election, after the election?
Yeah, I think it's a really timely question. If you're looking at what's happening, again, the Supreme Court, right? We're looking at that as a bigger issue in the world today and then the nation should, should Trump appoint somebody and should they? It's similar, right? But at a much smaller scale, right? Um, I, I, I think that the right person for the job, their resume is on the table right now, then I think they should hire them. And if. Um, I believe that the town manager is doing the job that's directed by. The, um, the town council should be doing what's directed by the town council and the mayor as the executive of that board. And if, if there is some, you know. If there's some concern about what's happening with the town manager, I, I, I think. So I believe in this, uh, Jack Willock, he's a, a kind of a, somebody I follow on Facebook. He's a former Navy SEAL. He wrote a book about extreme ownership. And so extreme ownership is a concept that, um, as a CEO or as a leader. You accept responsibility up and down the chain of command for what happens in an organization. You have to take extreme ownership on that. And I believe that. Uh, as a town councilman, I'll take extreme ownership for whatever actions the town manager makes, because we should be directing that town manager to do those things. Um, I, right now, it seems like there's a little confusion as to what the role of the town manager is in relation to the town council, who's. Uh, making these decisions. And again. Fire, firing of, of folks, um, you know, if I came into a new town manager and, and I didn't like the, what they were doing. Um, I certainly would, um, discuss with, um, the other folks on the town council as to how we wanted to redirect that person. I don't think I'd be coming in and be like, well, fire that person. Like, you kinda talked about in a, uh, in a business, if you come in and there's a whole organization within the, the organization, you have to fire people. Uh, uh, you know, I'd come in and try to work with that person if they were hired, if they were hired right for the job. But I also have a different concept of who should be hired for the job. And maybe this resume isn't on the table, but, you know, I have a military background and I, I serve in the National Guard now and I served in the Marine Corps. I've seen great people come out of the military who had ton of experience. In real world, terrible on paper, right? Um, thankfully, like I got a writing degree, so I was able to turn, you know, works with explosives into, uh, good under pressure. And other things like that, where, you know, some folks aren't good at, um, kind of, um, building their resumes and writing them. I've helped many military folks. Uh, uh, friends of mine, Marines I worked with rewrite their resumes, um, so they could get professional jobs, cause they had the experience. They just didn't know how to put it on paper. So, you know, one of the things I look at is if we hired somebody with, again, I'm, I'm a big proponent of process improvement. We could hire, hire somebody who has process improvement background, or somebody who's got a military background, or something along those lines. I think that we would see somebody who would. Enact and more, more properly, not in a political sense, they would be doing the job as directed. And we could see, um, you know, uh, a forward direction that is actually directed by the town council. Um, um, again, I read what I read in the newspaper here and I, 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 I'm often a little confused as to who's running what. Um, who's in charge and who's taking responsibility, who's putting out press releases? Um, who should really be stepping up and standing, you know, uh, standing out front, um, ahead of the communication game and that, that type of thing. So. When I look at the town manager position, if they hire somebody, great. I'm happy to work with that person and figure out if they're the best person for the job. If they're not, and they, they, there's no. There's no shift if they're not doing the right things. Um, but, um, again, I think it's their prerogative if they wanna hire somebody before that. Um, I hate, I hate to delay that, but I also believe the interim manager should be interim position. Uh, so that's a stance. If you talk about interim, how long does interim mean? Um, we've, we, I believe we've had interim, I don't know exactly how long we've had an interim town manager.
It'd be a year after.
Yeah, it seems like an awfully long time in a selection process for somebody. Maybe they're scrubbing their resumes the way they scrubbed yours. I don't know if that's the process. Was that, how long was that process? Was it?
Oh, that, that actually went about, uh, started in March and, uh, six or eight months.
So maybe they're doing the same thing this time around. So maybe they're doing their due diligence and to hire somebody that's perfect for the job. But again. Sometimes maybe not perfect is the best. And if we could find somebody who's got those qualifications, perhaps not on paper, but. Um, I'd love to see a change. I'd just love to see a change in a lot of things and thinking outside the box. Solutions, uh, might be coming from a different area.
Well, let me, let me, you had another question, but I, I think this is probably a more important question to kind of follow up. Uh, what we have seen, um, in this particular council has, is a general disrespect for the mayor. If you're elected council, what, what, what do you think the relationship of the mayor to the council person is?
So, yeah, I was always, I was not always, but, um, in my recent memory, I've been under the impression that. The mayoral position was more of a figurehead position. This is something that kind of, I don't know where it originally started, but. That's, that was kind of the concept I heard, especially around the last election. I heard, oh, the mayoral position is just a figurehead. Um, you know, if that mayor is supposed to be, uh, as an executive of the board, leading the board, um, to make decisions. Not just a deciding vote and ties. And these are, again, these are the things I've heard. And I'm, I'm learning, as I said, I'm learning a lot. Uh, I'm soaking in a lot of information, hearing a lot of stuff from folks. And if that's really the case, that the mayor is supposed to be there, then the mayor should be out front. On a lot of issues, should be someone who really can step out and speak about things and say, this is why the council made these decisions. There shouldn't be individual statements from council members. It should be a unified board led by an executive. And, uh, and I, I feel like, uh, in my case, uh, a mayor, uh, whoever that mayor is, you know, I, I do come from a military background. Is that we respect, uh, folks in roles in that hierarchy. And if that's what the, if the mayor comes to that table, that's the way it will be run. And I, I think I saw a little bit, a little bit of that when I got. Um, brought on to the town planning commission is that, you know, they deferred to, I think it was, uh, Tim Dar was the mayor at the time. And, you know, they deferred to him on certain points and he did a lot of the asking me the questions and then the council members kind of stepped in. Um, I'd like to see a little bit more of that in the future.
Well, that's great. I think, I think your answer is right on, right on the mark. Uh, so we've pretty much covered everything unless you wanna cover something else or any, wanna address any.
No, you know, I really wanna plug my business again, but I won't. I'll leave off on that.
Today we have, you know, ten percent off just for today, whoever watches this video. So, so now we're to a point then in our conversation that this is where you look at the camera and tell the citizens. In a relatively brief statement of who you are and what you wanna do and ask for the vote.
Okay, um, I guess I forgot about this portion, so I'm not, I'm not prepared. No, I'm always prepared. The, um. I'd just like to say that, you know, I, I, as somebody who has kind of invested a good part of, um, my past couple of years. I've really dug in deep here in Front Royal. I'm, I'm working primarily, you know, my, my slogan is. Um, our families, our town, our future. And I, I didn't just come up with that. I, I've, I've developed it over the course of several years, thinking about what's so important. And it does start with the family. You know, my family is why I moved here, raising my children. Um, there were quite a few private school options I wanted to be able to send my kids to, um, that were affordable. There's even a new school that just opened up. So. You know, there's, there's even an entrepreneurial spirit when it comes to private education here in Front Royal. I, you know, I, our town, so, you know, really important to my family that our, this town succeeds. It's important to me. It's important to my business partner. It's important to. My friends who are entrepreneurs here in town as well and have started businesses and own properties and, um, uh, I'm all in. And our future, why is that so important? Well, because we, we need to know that the future is not a repeat of the past. There's so often I've, I see names, uh, coming up into dealings. I hear names and. Again, not to disrespect the past and the things that they've done, but I really feel like it's time to move forward, uh, to move this town forward. Um, my, my new unit, so I changed it from the Marine Corps over to the National Guard, the, the unit motto is ever forward. And it spoke to me. It really spoke to me when I got there and I joined that unit out there in Winchester, the, the one sixteenth, the twenty-ninth Infantry Division. And I hear, you know, ever forward. And I'm thinking to myself, wow, that's a great idea. We as a town need to be moving ever forward and, um, and, and let go of some of the past, let go of some of that and, and, and. And, you know, with respect, of course, um, the, the unit never forgets that, um, they're the Stonewall Brigade, right? So not only do they remember their past, but they also look to the future and how they'll, they'll serve the, the, the state and the nation as, as the National Guard unit. But in with, uh, with the town, the same thing. We can't forget our past. We can't, we also have to remember not to repeat the errors that we've made.
Well, you know, if, if you don't, if you don't look at the history and the past history, you're bound to maybe do it again and again.
That's right.
So we wanna learn from, uh, from the past and then not, like you said, keep moving. I like that, by the way. That, that's great, moving forward. I, I might use that in, in one of my businesses.
It should be our new slogan. That, that, not the Aspen one, but we'll say the.
Well, the Aspen, I'm still partial to the Aspen. I, I thought that, I nailed everything, but, uh, apparently I, you know, I upset some of the people, but. Anyway, well, thanks for coming in.
Yeah.
I hope that you'll come in maybe later on in around October and.
Sure, I'll commit it somewhere.
Couple other issues with us.
Absolutely.
The whole purpose of what we're doing here today is, I think this is the first time since I've been here for the last fourteen years. That we've actually talked to candidates about real issues and not, not partisan stuff, but real issues affecting us, like you say. The family and, and the community. So I really appreciate you coming in, so.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. Thank you.